Okay, like call the committee whole meeting for Monday, March 3rd, 2025 to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gaffino.
Here.
Trustee Curtis. Trustee Gaitley.
Here.
Trustee Lowery.
Here.
Trustee Nudgevich.
Here.
Trustee Salazar.
Here.
All right, audience comments? Trustee comments? All right, I had one under discussion, Nathan.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item tonight is a concept plan for the Orchard Plaza, which is located on the northeast corner of Orchard and Oak Street. So this is the triangle-shaped piece of land that was reserved for commercial purposes when the Springs development was built farther east down Oak Street. At the time, it was reserved for commercial. The comp plan calls for it to be commercial and is currently zoned to be to general business. The current proposal would be to create three lots in total. The farthest lot is shown with a fueling center, with a convenience store, a drive-through and space for a restaurant user. The store would be set up to have the drive-through and an outdoor patio for eventual food user. The middle lot would be developed with a five-unit, 11,000-square-foot retail center. This would also be set up to have a possible drive-through on one of the units, most likely the end unit there. The developer would reserve the largest lot right on the hard corner. That is the lot that's the deepest. So right now, that lot would not be developed, but would be marketed for future uses. That was actually at the request of staff. The lot farthest to the south there is the deepest lot and could more easily house a hotel, a larger restaurant, other types of uses. Whereas the lot farthest north, where the triangle pinches, it's pretty hard to fit much there besides a fuel station or a strip mall. So we actually asked them to switch that, to move that stuff to the north and preserve the farthest southern lot for a future use. The site for this was set up when the Springs was done. So the right-in, right-out on Orchard is there. There's a right-in, right-out on Oak Street there. If you, so to access the site, there's that right-in, right-out. There's one here. And if you want a left-in, you can actually come back to the Springs and come back in there. The detention ponds and everything were sized for the ultimate build-out of commercial lots out here when the Springs came in. So all the utilities have been stubbed there. Everything is ready to go. Building designs, they're showing a mix of brick, stone, metal, and ephesus. And complementary designs between the two buildings. So there's the five-unit strip mall, and then there's the fuel center. So with that, I'll invite the applicant up to introduce themselves and answer any questions you might have.
Bill Zaleski with Advantage Consulting Engineers, Lamont, Illinois. I will be doing the civil and the surveying for this development.
Iman Shumodi with Nova Design Build. I'm going to be the architect working on the project.
As Nathan explained pretty thoroughly what the intention is of the development, all the utilities are in place. We did contact KDOT. We attempted to get another access into the site in the middle. They flat-out said no. We have the two access points set up for it. We're not going to get any more. We're here to get approval to move forward with the final engineering on this project. And as mentioned, all the utilities are in place for this site.
Do you have any idea what you want to put there?
Put.
Do you have any idea what business you're going to put there?
Well, we've got the Shell gas station at the north end, a cilantro restaurant possibly in the middle unit, and a drive-through restaurant. That's all that we have right now as far as potential users in the middle lot.
Cilantro, like tacos?
Yes.
Okay.
Mexican.
I'd like to see on the facade a little bit more architectural detail. I don't want bare bones, just vanilla. I'd like something that's going to be kind of in keeping with what we have across the street. We've got some high-end restaurants on that corridor. I'd like to see this a little bit more greenery, a little bit more detailing, a little bit more ornamentation.
Current facade shows trendy contemporary building with a lot of glass in the front to invite people into the building. We have stone cladding. We have brick masonry for majority of the facade in the front. And then there is the strip going at the very top is going to be a textured metal panel that will encase the canopy kind of element in the front to raise the height. In the back is taco, slash ephesus. I will be happy to introduce any other elements that you think will be needed to enhance the facade.
How many square feet is that middle building?
The middle building is 11,200 square.
Oh, okay, so it's not that big. It's not that big.
So we'll have five retail spaces or five doors?
Yeah, this is the picture of the five-unit building.
Okay, and the parking's in the front or the back? If you go back to the other drawing, I can see that.
Yeah, parking here, drive aisle in the back so you can have the drive-through, but parking here and parking here.
So the parking won't be fronting to the street.
So that's the Shell on the south end?
North end.
North end, okay, right there, okay, I got it, no.
So there's one restaurant potentially in the middle building? Is that correct?
Shall we have two fast-food businesses? North will be coffee with the drive-through window, some kind of coffee place, and then subway on the south end of the building next to the C store. And the retail building will have cilantro where the drive-through is shown.
Is cilantro, I'm not familiar with that. Is that a sit-down establishment or it's more of a fast-food type of establishment?
There is partially sit-down, but also fast-food with the drive-through.
Okay, somewhere in between, okay.
But that big building has five different units in it, is that right?
Yeah, there will be four retail tenants, plus or minus, it can change.
But none of those four will be any type of food or there could be?
No.
No food, just the one will have food at the end?
I'm good with it.
I'm not so sure that, I like the idea of another gas station, quite honestly. We've got three others within a mile, at least. You got Casey's, you got Speedway, you got Woodman's. I'm not so sure our residents will be too thrilled with just slapping another gas station in here, especially, you know, we got a lot of residential development coming in that area. I'd love to, you know, something, you know, a little bit nicer, maybe, ideally like some restaurants, like we always say, and then throwing up another retail building with the potential sit vacant for a while, just like we've already got plenty of those in town. So I'm not sure that I'm thrilled with the plan and I'm not sure that the majority of our residents would be thrilled with it. So that's kind of where I'm at with it.
There's not a gas station on that corner, is there?
There's not.
Well, it's not really on that corner, though.
This isn't on the corner either.
Well, it's on Orchard and Oak, right?
Nope.
Yeah.
But it's on the very far north of that property, I would imagine.
It's not on the corner per se. It's down a little bit.
It's on the far north side of that triangle property.
It's right by the Springs, right in front of the Springs?
Yeah, just, yeah.
Not right in front of the Springs. So here, look at it, it's at the very far north of that triangle. So it's already, it's all the way over where, say, hardware is.
Like if Tanner Road was extended across the street, that's where the gas station would be. It's not on the corner.
The Woodman's pumps are about as close as these pumps will be to Oak Street. So again, you know, this has been vacant for such a long time and we've been really trying to do a job with residential development to attract some really nicer things over there and slap on a gas station right in the middle. I don't think.
I agree, but I mean, if it's an allowable use, then.
Well, it's not, is it?
So the retail building would be, the gas station part would have a special use.
The gas station's a special use.
Special use, yes.
Likely, if this were to go forward, we'd reopen the PUD. There is an existing approved PUD here. With the site plan, obviously, as the property gets, pinches in the triangle, there's going to be some setback things there because square parking lots and square peg triangle hole, there's going to be some things that are going to get pinched.
Is that a challenge with that?
Yeah, for any development that's going to go there, you're going to, you know, parking lots and parking spaces are squares or rectangles. So when you get up in that corner, you're going to hit some setback things right there.
And so what is the eventual intention, if there's one that's known, to the space that they're allocating to develop later, the 2.3 acres?
It was staff suggestion, you know, they had these two uses. Initially, they had the gas station on the far southern corner with just a lot of extra parking. Staff suggested that's the deepest, biggest lot and you could get a hotel. You could get a larger restaurant there where you probably couldn't get those uses up in the corner. So how about, you know, preserve the southern end? I don't believe they have a tenant yet, but.
So there's no intention necessarily? I was just wondering, was there a concept for the whole area and what that might be developed into later on?
So still commercial, you know, it's still accessed by the access road here. You still have shared access. It was just that that lot was the deeper lot.
No, what you're saying makes perfect sense. I was just wondering if there was something that they had thought about that they were eventually going to make that lot into, that's all.
How long has it been vacant?
Forever.
Yeah, as far as I know, forever.
It's been vacant since I've been on this board, so.
I don't think we always have to jump at the first thing, though.
Do we get anybody else looking at it or is it just kind of like?
So for a long time, it was owned by the Springs, by the apartment complex, and they approached us several times to build more apartments there. We turned those downs. It was always the intention to keep the frontage as commercial. So, you know, they put it up for sale and these folks have purchased it to do commercial development.
I agree with what Ted said. You know, I'd love to see something other than a gas station go there. The fact that it backs to not just residential, but a high-density residential development concerns me a little bit. And then, you know, we've got people eating outside right across the street on patios. I mean, I don't.
That's, yeah.
I don't think.
It's a nice area.
A good use of that space.
What would you want there?
You know, I'm fine with retail development, you know, medical.
Like what would you want, not what you don't want, what would you want?
A restaurant. Again, and there's going to be a lot of residential going in there.
I mean, if we reserved it for future commercial development and we rejected the fact that they were going to build more apartment buildings, what was the intention, you know, what were we thinking that would be built there when we did that? I guess that's the question. Because this is commercial development. I don't disagree with you about the gas station.
The gas station is a special use, though. That's the one that I have a main problem with.
That's your main objection?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not a fan of just another, just throw up another five-unit strip of retail buildings when we have, you know, tons of those vacant already, but we can't really control that part of this thing, you know.
I don't know if we have tons vacant, but.
Yeah, we don't have that many new ones that vacant.
But originally, when the Springs developed, this was going to be eateries. That was like the sale pitch to us was that people from the Springs could walk over, interconnect, eat dinner there, things like that. So I wasn't excited about the gas station either, so.
I think we all agree with your point.
We don't have so much left out there.
Absolutely.
Like, trustee Curtis said, this is kind of a prime restaurant kind of row or whatever you want to call it, but having people outside and having a fuel station there. It's like, gosh, we should be able to do better than that. Though strip center part, I'm okay with that, but.
Well, just like the storage facility that was going to go in a little bit of south from there, it was the same premise that we talked about at that time.
Correct.
And this is very visible to everyone who goes by that major intersection, so.
Well, I don't have a problem with it, so I'd be okay with it. I'm a little, when he said gas station, I thought, eh, another gas station. But I don't, I see that as kind of an area that's kind of out of the way except for that residential area right behind it. So I don't see a lot of a problem with it myself. It's my position.
Do you have any idea like what the traffic flow in there would be as far as the Springs behind it there, like the gas station, how many trips or?
We have not done a traffic study yet, but we know that Kane County DOT will want a traffic study because we're going to be spilling out into the road. We need to get here first, well, we went to them first to get additional access. It was denied. We know that the next step's going to be, once we, after approvals, reviews by the village, then we'll go back to Kane County DOT with a traffic study.
So Orchard is a limited access road, is it not? Okay, so therefore, there can't be access in and out of Orchard Road. It would only be off of Oak Street.
It's, they have one right-in, right-out right there on Orchard. That's all they're going to get.
The future of, if you can almost see it on the map, there is a connection to the north if that development ever goes in on the north side. There's a potential that that road will connect down.
So Carolyn, what's your thought, then?
My thought is, I think with everybody, we prefer not to have a gas station there. Prefer that we don't really have a problem with the retail. We don't like the idea of a gas station. I suppose that's where I'm at.
I think we also need to take into consideration the people who've already invested in our village. We have two high-end restaurants with patios. Are we going to now create an adverse condition for them? Is it going to impact their sales? I mean, I think we've got, we're known for our restaurants. We're known for having some great places to eat. I don't think it would be too wise on our part to plop a gas station right across the street from two of the nicest patios we have. That's just my thought.
So what are we at?
So at this point, I think we just go back to the developer. The whole point of the concept review is, you know, staff looked at gas station. We know that in the past, the board has mentioned things about gas stations coming in. And being that it was a special use, we felt it made sense to bring the concept forward to get feedback like this. So now we can go back to that developer and tell the developer, you know, the interest is in commercial, but not necessarily a gas station. So if you move forward, it's going to be tough to get a special use approval.
Plus, the drawing or, you know, depicting that metal building would be nice in the future to have actually some color rendering so you can actually see the type of material and what it looks like since we kind of mentioned across the street there has some upscale type, you know, material.
Yeah, no, definitely, if we get into the PUD process, we would have detailed elevations and all that.
Yeah.
You'd get a much better sense of how it's going to fit into the landscape of what is around it with that.
All right, anything else for this one?
That's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item two under discussion, Jason?
Give me one second here. All right, thank you, Mayor. So we're getting close to the end of the budget process for fiscal year '25, '26. We should have everything with the document ready to go hopefully next week, but we just wanted to give the board just a quick update of kind of where we're at, some major highlights or things we're seeing in the budget that will be included. So first of all, we're going to start with personnel since personnel makes up the largest part of our budget. Just some assumptions we're using for June 1st. The Public Works Union contract calls for a 3.75% increase. Police sergeants, three and a half. The officers are currently under negotiation right now, so we don't know what that increase is going to be come June 1st. And then our non-union employees were at 3% we're proposing. On the medical insurance side, our HMO, 6.5% increase and the PPO, 11% increase. And then on the dental side, no change in our HMO and then the PPO dental, I think, 4.5% increase. On the IMRF, which is the pension plan for the non-union employees, our current rate is 9.52% of salary. And then we're projecting 11% for next year. We won't know the number till later this year, but just to be safe, we're projecting it might go up a little just because that's usually based on how investments do during the year. So we're just kind of putting a cushion in there just in case investments go bad next year. So we have some new positions that we're going to propose for next fiscal year, but we wanted to just highlight one really quick because we're going to actually ask if we can get this one started before next fiscal year, so during this current one. Just a little background on this position. Previously, the administration department had the executive assistant position and then the management analyst position. So between these two, they do a lot of special projects, like the FOIAs, the events, handling various projects. The admin, or the management analyst went over to the police department and then we create the executive assistant became the community relations coordinator. So now she handles a lot of all the events, the FOIAs, getting the meeting agenda packets together, serves as deputy clerk. So what we're looking to do is to create administrative operations assistant position. What that would do is a lot of the duties that the community relations coordinator is currently doing, they would take over. So I listed a bunch out here of those duties right now. So the meeting agendas and packets, the FOIAs, strategic planning, tracking and updates, assisting with special events, serving as the deputy clerk, providing office support, handling all the resolutions, ordinance and contracts, and then interdepartmental projects. So then this would free up the community relations coordinator now to really focus on community outreach, handling all the events we're doing, helping with economic development, and then the village's marketing efforts. Now with us having well over 10 events a year, it's becoming kind of daunting for that person to handle all the events and being there to put all those events, plus a lot of the things that I mentioned up there earlier. So that's something that we're going to be possibly looking to bring back a budget amendment for this current year so that we can start recruiting for that position as we're starting to get into the event season, you know, because we don't want to have the events starting up without some initial assistance there. Then looking at the budget that we're going to be proposing for the following year, some of the positions we're looking at is an additional full-time police officer. This was basically, one of the police officers is now a full-time school resource officer, so this would be putting another officer back on the streets to help out, to make sure that we're covered there. We'd be proposing a part-time code enforcement officer. This would be 10 hours a week, really just helping out and supplementing areas, say like one night a week and maybe a weekend for a few hours. We're really thinking maybe 10 hours a week just to kind of pick up on some of those maybe spots where we're needing some additional help. A part-time custodian, this would be about 15 hours a week. This would start up with when the public works facility is open and we're looking, we currently have one custodian that splits a couple hours at this facility and then goes over to the police department. We just didn't think one person could handle now three buildings. So we'd just be looking for someone a couple hours a day at the new facility to help the custodian there. Putting some additional seasonal public works labor out there, so just helping out and getting in the field during some of the busy times of the year. And then a full-time water laborer. And then one other additional thing we'd look to is making our public work streets foreman into the street superintendent. This would then leave the foreman position vacant for the year. We wouldn't look to fill it as part of the budget. So in total, all of those staffing levels, we'd see the staffing full-time equivalents go up to 78.7 or up 4.07 for the year. Debt for the year, we currently have two debt issuances outstanding. The first one's our water debt. So this is for water capital that had been done years ago. We owe about a little over $3 million on this one. Total principal and interest for the year is $492,772. And then our newest debt, the 2024 bonds, this was for the public works facility, $13,665,000. We haven't made any payments on that. They'll come due the next year. Principal and interest, $1,234,847. So one item we also wanted to talk about, too, is the grocery tax. So come January 1st, 2026, the 1% tax on groceries gets eliminated at the state level. The village receives about $600,000 annually between, in grocery taxes from our available retailers here. Municipalities can adopt local ordinance to put the grocery tax back on the books. So when it goes away with the state, we can say we want to levy it locally here. If we wanted to do that, we'd need to file an ordinance with the Department of Revenue by October 1st of this year for then to go in effect January 1st, so there'd essentially be no loss in revenue. Just goes off on the state level and then comes back on the local level. We put the budget together, assuming that we were going to continue this tax. So assuming everyone's okay with that, the night we pass the budget, we'd also bring forward an ordinance that puts the local grocery tax on the books and then send that to the Department of Revenue. So here's a few of our major revenues in the general fund. I've listed seven revenues here. We've got about 50, you know, various revenues that make up our general fund, but just between these seven here, it makes up about 85% to 90% of all the revenues that come in to the general fund. With sales and cannabis tax being our biggest one, we're budgeting at $6.9 million. You see, that's a decrease of 411 or for the 5.6%. Mainly, it's a combination of eliminating some of the grocery tax and we had a few one-off payments this year to where kind of revenue got pushed up a little higher than normal just because some catch-ups with the state. Income tax, another major revenue, $3,175,000, up a little bit from this current year. And our property taxes, obviously, we passed the levy. So this is just the levy that we passed. Building permits, you see that decrease there, $500,000. That's really just a number that kind of fluctuates year by year based on whatever kind of developments in town. We usually budget around $400,000, $450,000, just not knowing what big projects come in. That's kind of the normal amount, I would say, you know, miscellaneous office build-outs, home permit type of thing. So just going through some highlights of our general fund. Police pension contributions, $1,955,000, based on our actuarial valuation. We have money in there for a new police records management system, $144,000. This would be the implementation and the first year cost. Our City of Aurora dispatch fees, we just got the number of $297,470. We have a $30,000 increase in our sales tax rebate now with the Ram dealership coming online. So our sales tax rebates are $425,000 total. This would be Town Center, Ford, Genesis, and now Ram. Our vehicle replacement charges, so this money our general fund puts into the vehicle and equipment replacement fund for the purchase of future items, $529,100. And then we still maintain our capital transfer. So this is basically any leftover money in the general fund. We push over to the capital projects fund to save for future capital. We're still looking at maintaining that $400,000 annual transfer in this current budget. Just moving over to some of the capital projects funds now. So our 2025 annual road program generally is just an expenditure of the capital projects fund. But if you look down underneath here, motor fuel tax fund, we have $765,000 of rebuild Illinois funds remaining that we have to spend this year. So what we're doing is we're utilizing some of that money and then lessening the impact to our capital projects fund just to kind of make sure that money gets off the books. But what that allows us to do then is put that, take that savings that motor fuel tax is going to cover and be able to start the Veterans Memorial Phase 1 that we have budgeted for $675,000. Excuse me. We have the start of the Orchard Gateway Road construction at $650,000. Moving over to the TIF funds, our Route 31 TIF ends in August of this year. We're projected to have a balance of $1.3 million within that fund. The plan right now is to port that money over to the United TIF Fund and basically use that money to continue with property purchases and acquiring any kind of land within that TIF. We're expected to see about $1.6 million in property tax money coming into that TIF, so it's really starting to come online. Although $636,000 we're projecting is, I mean, I'm sorry, $620,000 we're projecting is the TIF incentive to where we kind of rebate money back to that I-88 corporate park. So one thing that we're going to see in our water fund is the water rates. If you remember back in early 2023, we put together a five-year plan to where we said rates were going to increase like a cumulative 50% based on just the operating needs and the capital projects of the water fund. So back when we presented it, rates were at $3.70, and we showed at the end of five years, we're going to try to get to $5.95. Currently, we're at $4.79, so this is basically year two of that plan. Just looking at our water system and just how the operations, the supplies, the energy costs, the capital, the maintenance, all that, we're looking to see that this is going up a lot higher than what we had planned on. So what our recommendation is, is to go to the 5.95 per 1,000 gallons starting next year. We are doing a water system master plan right now to where EEI is looking at basically our entire water system, like what they think our. We are doing a water system master plan right now, to where, uh, EEI is looking at basically our entire water system, like what they think our rate should be, how, what our capital needs to be, what ca, what we need to be doing, uh, in there, that should be, uh, available later this spring. We anticipate, the rates are probably gonna be a lot higher than five ninety-five when they come back, um, so that's what we're saying right now, is just based on what we're looking at, um, with what we know, before that study comes out, is, uh, we, our recommendation would be going straight to the five ninety-five, and that's the number we kinda have there in the budget that we're working on. And then just looking at, uh, some of the things within our, uh, our water fund, as I mentioned earlier, the debt, four hundred ninety-two thousand dollars, um, our electricity, just for our, our treatment plants and our wells, we have budgeted at five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's a number that's continually going up at, each year. Some of the planned major capital, uh, we have our SCADA system, uh, that's, a lot of it's getting done this year, but we're gonna have to carry some money over for next year, because the project won't be done. Our west treatment plan, uh, we're carrying over some money, um, for the electrical and grounding repairs that were approved earlier tonight, that we have our HMO system improvements budgeted at four hundred and fifty thousand. On the east treatment plan, we're probably gonna do the same exact electrical and grounding, uh, repairs, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, and then our central water tower, uh, we're projecting about three point one million of it will fall into next year, so that's gonna be a three-year project, with some happening this, this current year, next year, and then a little bit the following year. Um, just some vehicle and equipment items, um, public works streets, a new one-ton dump truck, um, the, uh, V-Box salt spreader, an anti-tank for the freight lighter truck, that's just the equipment side, I think with the truck will get this current year, so that'll just be outfitting the truck. On the water side, we have a new pickup, a budget at sixty-five thousand, um, and then some equipment items, uh, village board, AV upgrade, um, forklift for the new public works facility, and then a salt spreader for another truck we have. And then some, uh, other considerations, generally what we do is we come back to the board at the end of the year, saying, here's what our general fund surplus is, um, here's the amount we wanna send over to our capital projects fund. But as we mentioned, with, with the water, um, what we're looking right now is we're probably about a two point five million dollar surplus in the general fund, we wanna take our normal four hundred thousand dollar capital projects that we, transfer that we do, that we budgeted. We usually keep, try to keep about five hundred, four, five hundred thousand dollars in the general fund, just to make sure our reserve stays healthy, the remainder that we wanna transfer over to the water fund, uh, the one point six million dollars we're projecting. This is really just to help with the water fund, you know, as we mentioned, the, uh, the water tower's at seven point eight million dollars, way significantly higher than we ever thought it was, so this just kinda helps preserve some of the, the, the reserve balance in the, in the water fund, and, and helps us keep, um, things going.
So the, with the water rates, it's typically, a water fund is operated as an enterprise fund, meaning it's self-sustaining. Right now, our current rates are at a point where they're not actually paying for the production of water, so we actually pay more to produce our water than the money we take in from the residents to pay for it. So what ends up happening is, we end up meeting that gap by other revenues that go into that account, such as like cell tower fees, uh, so eventually, they're, they're fairly equal, and the goal is always to have your rate be just slightly above your general maintenance, uh, and your operations every year, so that you're keeping pace. The issue with the capital comes in as, you know, our treatment plants are getting to be twenty years old, which is why we have the study going on, future water source is part of that study, so, you know, the board will have to review the results of EEI's study, and they'll have to decide what the future water source is. If the aquifer is healthy, then we decide whether or not we wanna continue, uh, revamping our system and staying on deep wells. If the aquifer is deplenishing, and it's not getting to the point that it's replenishing fast enough, uh, then you have to look at whether or not an alternate water source, like Lake Michigan or buying from another community, is, and that's a whole new system now, and a whole new set of needs, pipes, towers, whatever. At this point, even with that water rate increase, uh, Jason did a very nice job of taking, we have a water study that we do internally, where we look at our rates compared to other Fox Valley towns, even with this much of a rate increase in this year alone, we're still gonna have the cheapest effective water tax, uh, water bill in the entire region. Which shows you that we've been prudent about raising our rates, until we had a reason to actually prepare for it. This year, it's, it kinda goes, it's, uh, it goes against my better judgment, Jason's, to ever put money from the general fund into the water. We typically want the water, like I said, that fund to be self-sufficient, however, given the surplus, given the ability that that also helps us offset the cost to residents, we felt that, given the amount of capital that we already know without that study is on the horizon, we figured that was a nice way to at least bridge the gap, and keep that, that rate down at least a little bit longer, so we're gonna raise it, but not as much as we probably should. And wait till EA gives us the full study, hopefully by the summer, and we start to really look into that for next budget year, and we have some, some major discussions about the future capital, the water system.
So that's all I really had, um, these next couple of weeks, we're, we're just really finalizing the budget right now, I've kinda pretty much got it, uh, almost close to being done. Uh, my plan right now is, by next Friday, we'll send out a draft copy of the budget, post it online for the public to view, and we'll come back next, then two Mondays on the seventeenth, they have a, a, a little more in-depth, uh, presentation, maybe going department by department of summary highlights and some things that are in it. If we need to, in April the seventh and the twenty-first, we'll kinda reserve time like we normally do, um, to maybe update the board on if there's any changes to the budget, um, further, new information that we had that got worked into it, we'll have the official bub, public hearing on the twenty-first, and then approve the budget, um, come May fifth. I think previously, that the only things that we've mentioned is there may, we may bring the budget amendment for that position, uh, that we talked about at a few, as a, at an upcoming meeting here, and then also on that May fifth, we'd probably bring the grocery tax, and then the water rates, uh, for approval, uh, that same night.
All right, thank you, any questions?
No.
Or Jason? All right, so we need a motion, um, to go to the exec session to discuss, um, minutes, and possibly a release of exec session minutes.
Second.
If you're in favor, say aye.
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 Suppose the same, all right, um, we'll be going to the exec session.